I didn't hear it either. But it says this meeting is being recorded. Okay, so we're good. Okay. All right, so I would like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, April fifteenth. I'd like to call the meeting to order and our Finance Director will um do roll call.
Commissioner Quinn.
Present.
Commissioner Noel.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Alright, thank you for that. Um I have a prayer for elected leadership from Sister Connie that I'd like to read if you please stand. Join me in uh prayer and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh God, give us strong, wise, compassionate leaders. Send us leaders with truthful hearts and impassioned spirits. Who will stand for justice and freedom for all. Give us leaders who will unite with other leaders to bring about a kinder, more peaceful world. Leaders who will support their coworkers during times of challenge and change. Give us leaders who are servants of the people. Listening, encouraging, caring for all races, creeds, and cultures. Welcoming those seeking asylum, providing a safe place for all to thrive. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to say to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Next on the agenda is public comment for items not listed on the agenda. So if anyone has public comment outside of the um county lake discussion, I would please welcome you forward. Okay. Seeing none, um I have a couple additions for our agenda before calling for approval. We have a Marhill Mount Academy certif- patient uh certificate of recognition that will be under number eleven presentation. And then under unfinished business, I have Schwab Eaton purchase order from last week that we tabled for more information as well as Need Road Farm Lease for the twelve acres. So with those two additions also, after our meeting, we will have two budget workshops, one at twelve thirty with register deeds. And one at one PM with EMS. So with those um additions, I would look for a motion to approve this week's agenda.
Sure. One second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Alright, next is the consent agenda, which we have the commission meeting minutes um from last week and then the Finance Director review.
Okay, so for um this week, there's no payroll. Uh credit cards was two thousand five seventy-six fifty-two. Out of that, we had several departments this week. Uh three sixty-nine sixty-seven was for Appraiser and GIS, consisting of office supplies, training expenses, fuel, notary, tire repair. Um twelve eighty-eight was for County Clerk, which was a training meal that was not paid on the last credit card statement. Uh five fifty-three oh two was County General. Um that consists of programmable tokens that IT orders. Um just kind of like the the Bob's. Um and then hardware drives from the cyber attack. Uh thirty-four ninety-nine was EMS gas pump. Two seventy-one twenty-six was HR for employee appreciation gifts. Forty-eight dollars was IT for software for password manager. One thousand two eighty-six seventy was for law enforcement. Um zip recruiter subscription, newspaper subscription, toll charges, Metrofax, canine handler membership, Facebook Meta subscription. Um so in total, for tomorrow, April sixteenth, eight eight, accounts payable check run is twenty-six thousand three twenty-two sixty-seven. Did it see anything out of the ordinary with any of that? I could not send you the itemized Visa charges because it was too large of a file, but they're in the bills if you want to review them.
Okay, perfect. Um so I would look for a motion to approve uh the consent agenda.
So move. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Next, we have Commissioner comments. Commissioner Campbell.
Let's see here. I will be busy the next two weeks. I have the County Safety Committee meeting Thursday the seventeenth. Uh I'll be attending the Legislative Coffee at the Ashen Depot Saturday. I am going to be gone to the Kansas County Commission Conference twenty-first and twenty-second. And then I'll have two meetings on the twenty-third. The Adult County Correction Meeting and the Economic Advisory Board Meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Noel.
I don't have any comments today.
Okay, um the only thing I have is I will also be attending the Kansas County Commission Association uh annual meeting. Um it is in Manhattan this year uh from the twenty-first to the twenty-third. Alright. Next up, I have a room full of very smart students um in a certificate of recognition uh that the Board of County Commissioners would like to present to you. Um this certificate of recognition is presented to the Mar Hill Mount Academy twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five mock trial team. The Atchison County Board of Commissioners hereby recognize the Mar Hill Mount Academy twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five mock trial team and their coaches Judge Martin Asher, Catherine Asher, and Jeffrey Schremer for their distinguished achievement in becoming three-time state champions. This honor reflects the team's exceptional dedication, skillful preparation, and cohesive collaboration during the competition. We extend our appreciation for their exemplary performance of the team and the pride they have brought to Atchison County. So um Commissioners, do you want to say anything and we'll recognize each of them? Commissioner Campbell?
So uh our HR department, um they're great folks and they have uh uh created this these certificates. You each get one for yourself. Um I'll read this one. It's very similar, but uh uh the following word is given to uh Morehill Mount Academy twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five Kansas Mock Trial, three P state champions. We express our appreciation for the dedication, passion, and exemplary performance. The Atchison County Board of Commission District Court and the Ash community extend their congratulations on this outstanding achievement. Uh I would just say, it goes without saying. You know, when you win a state championship, that's yeah, that's a a a great accomplishment. So you've done that, but this year's state championship is the three P. You folks did something that a local uh sports franchise couldn't do. And and uh you know, they get paid hundreds of millions of dollars, right, to play the game. They couldn't make it happen. They fell short. You all uh take this on as a extracurricular activity. So your your main uh uh you know, goal uh and responsibility is to just to get through school, right? Is to is to study. That's what you all do, your students. So uh the fact that you have done this three times now, uh I think just it 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 speaks to something more endemic, something that's going on at Morehill, right? The really good things going on at Morehill. So uh that's all I wanted to, I wanted to point that out because uh a state championship in itself is is wonderful. But the fact that Morehill has put three teams together that uh have done that is uh uh it's just a, it's a wonderful thing. And so, but it does speak to, I think, Morehill and strong family, strong faith, and the Morehill uh school itself. So, thank you all. Congratulations.
Commissioner Noel.
I'm just, congratulations. Good, everybody give yourselves a round of applause.
Awesome. So yes, we have certificates to present to each one of you individually, as well as one for you um at school. And we are going to run up to the courtroom um and take a quick photo if you guys would be available. So we will be right back there.
Oh my goodness, yes, it's so awesome. Congratulations and you guys are so, speak small English.
Hi, this is Jim, you know.
Oh, Jim, of course.
Are you Mr. Saxton?
Yes, I am.
Jim, I helped Kevin. I've been to your place a lot of times, didn't have, and I never did meet you.
No, probably not. Kevin's still doing hay for me. He's a good guy. I mean, he's a good fisherman. He's a fisherman. Yes, I just told you, you're a good fisherman.
He's a great fisherman.
He knows how to fish.
He doesn't like to eat eat them, but he's a great one to clean them and catch them.
What do you catch it? What kind?
Catfish.
Man, catfish. Kevin brought me over catfish.
Oh, I do?
He's, I said, okay, I fixed it. I said, what am I, but well, can I phrase it, Kevin? Well, it won't be quite as good, but I said, I can't beat all of this at once. So I had catfish for quite a while. I just did put it in different, I need little packages, put it in my freezer. And it worked out great.
Always freeze mine in water.
Oh, do you?
Yeah. And put the lays in there and it freezes. They'll last a long time, you know, the years are still real good.
No, that's an idea. That's what I meant, water on the fish.
Get all the hair out.
But now I have to just catch some.
Why you got to do three of them? You can't catch them unless you go.
You're right.
Did he need to get his house all done?
Where's he at?
He's in. Yes, I'm behind. Yes, I did. Got it all done.
I'm Jim Heineken. I used to know you when you was about this big.
Yes. He was. He was. Yes.
You grew up.
Yeah, I mean, I've been really a small guy all my life.
You know, I mean, I'm back there.
Very sure.
But you didn't get your house all done?
Yeah, this is my life. That's good. Yes, you got it all done. I mean, other than, gotta get like houses in place.
He was not. But he had a brother that was six.
If you see anything green going up and down the highways, they went. Leave back roads. Anything green standard otherwise.
And you, uh, Atchison County CH.
You're doing. You're at the table.
I printed something. You were take care of Brenda. I mean, you were such a good date for her.
I think she was the good date. Be down there just a second. Good morning. How are you? But uh that was so much fun at night.
It was.
I didn't, I didn't pick it on the outside.
You kept him out later and it was been a long time. It's older women.
Oh, she's a party animal.
Yeah, I thought she was just a party animal with kindergarten. It was, that was so much fun. And I I just saw Ian Billings. He was in your class, right?
He was for this.
Okay, I just saw his aunt uh last Saturday and she was going to Ian's and his wife's uh child working hard, she won turn three with the identity. He lives down.
Next up, we have Mark Zeltner, Finance Director, with the consideration of USV three seventy-seven Sports Complex PO and second quarter dispersment, as well as a presentation of ARPA annual report.
Okay, so I think I'm going to change that up a little bit.
Okay.
Um I don't have the second quarter dispersment.
Okay.
I believe the County Clerk has it, but I don't have it currently with me, so we might just have to push that to the next available meeting. I have two um consideration of USV three seventy-seven and one Atchison.
Okay.
Um site. So the first one um is for Eppingham. It's the Wheatland Contracting for repairing uh leaking water line for five hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Okay. I would look for a motion uh to approve the request for payment from USV three seventy-seven for Wheatland Contracting as presented by our Finance Director.
So move.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero.
Second one out of the Eppingham site is to Brooks Electric. It's a service call to replace lighting coils for two thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars.
I look for a motion to approve the request for payment as presented by our Finance Director.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
The um third one is for the Atchison site, Top Electric for electric work performed at the new bathroom for one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
For a motion to re- to approve the request for payment as presented by our Finance Director for the Atchison Sports Location.
So move. Say.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
But update um with the totals amount remaining for the Eppingham site and the Atchison site out of the five hundred thousand dollar total allocation. With these taken into consideration, Eppingham has just a little over sixty-eight thousand seven hundred left to use out of their one hundred thousand dollar pot. And Atchison has a little over eighty-four thousand three hundred to use out of their four hundred thousand dollars.
And just since we have uh several people here today, just to give you guys um some understanding of what this is, is Atchison County has a Quartercent Sales Tax that funds our sports complex here in Atchison um of off of Seventeenth Street as well as the one in Eppingham as well. So Quartercent typically generates roughly around six hundred thousand a year. Um that goes into a fund that they're able to make these upgrades with that sales tax. So just to give you guys some insight on that.
Okay, the next thing I have is our ARPA expenditure tracking summary. Every year, there's a report due to the United States Government on April thirtieth. Um I've already submitted the report as we have expensed all of the dollars. The total was three million hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-two. Um so this report basically breaks it down, annual cycles from twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Um and then we don't have anything after that since we expended it. Uh so this is what the board needs to approve, is the summary sheet that's showing that we spent all of it. I've got some, I've signed it myself and then some spots for you.
Will we be subject to audit on that?
Yes.
This year.
Alright, so I looked for a motion um to approve the Lloyd Group Rescue Expenditure Tracking Summary as presented by our Finance Director.
So, second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, thank you. Uh next we have Scott Howard, our IT Director, with considerations of two purchase orders.
Hi there. So two of them for you guys today. Um one is for the website. Um basically, it's a just an annual hosting fee um for eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. Um second one is for um uh reconfiguring our remote access VPN to use multi-factor authentication. So that'll be coming in the IT budget.
Okay, so both of these are budgeted expenses in your twenty-five budget. Alright, so I would look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our IT Director to come out of his twenty-two-five budget in the amount of eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. That's for the annual fee for hosting and support to Civic Plus.
So move. Say.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. I look for, oh, you mean, yeah, sorry, thank you. Um a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our IT Director in the amount of six thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars. This is for the Cisco VPN configuration with MFA solution to Converge One. Um do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
So moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. And just so the public is aware, because it's the first time you've been to one of our meetings um and you do all the the things behind the scenes, um I just wanted to express, oh, sorry about that, express my gratitude as well as the whole organizations on the wonderful job you've done over the past month uh for Atchison County. I just think.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
You're you're an incredible leader and department head and um we just, when things unexpectedly happen, we have to deal with them and you have done amazing. So I just want to say thank you in a public meeting because you never come like in the face of the public. So you deserve all the recognition for how you handled all of it. So thank you.
Guys very much.
Alright, next up, we have Jill Thorne, the Atchison Chamber of Commerce Director with the twenty-twenty-six budget request. Hey Jill.
Hello, good morning. It feels like I'm in the principal's office. Haven't been there in three years. Okay, so um thank you guys for your guys' time today. I wanted to give you guys kind of a brief update of where we are. Um as you guys know, I just took this role on on January one, so I am learning all of the things that I don't know. And I'm learning them very quickly. Um because you know, you never know what you don't know, right? So um first of all, on the chamber, we are working on creating a better ROI for our members. Um looking back and seeing what they pay for a membership, what do they get in return? So I have increased our amount of communicating with them and learning sessions, brought back the lunch and learns, if you will, and different programming. We are actually also launching a brand new website. It goes live at midnight tonight. Um so I'm excited about that. Um it will actually have a searchable, workable directory on it for businesses. So if you go to plumber, the plumbers will actually show up. So and the the information will be updated on a regular basis. Um so on Main Street, uh it used to be its own separate board. However, when we became a Main Street in twenty-twenty-one, there were no, there was no funding that came with that other than the county funding. And so it had its own separate board. It was kind of defunct, so we have moved that into the Chamber Board with one Main Street chair um on that board that is Main Street-driven. Um on the Main Street, we are working on creating our new planters downtown. Um it's been a source of contention. And um we also are working on wayfinding. We have one building that is under the rooms grant currently. And the rooms grant, it gets housing, a second floor housing on buildings. Um and we, that rooms grant is also open again. And so I'm working on I have also spoke with the city of Eppingham. They had a mayor change out there. Um so I just sent all the information to Lisa at theirs to see if working with them to try to get them to become an affiliate uh Main Street so that they could take care of some of those, take pardon, some of those resources to help try to rebuild their downtown as well. Um the Main Street is a great program of a lot of great, great resources and some um grants and funding. So um I think that they would benefit drastically from that. Um and then on the tourism side of things, we are working with Sports KS um to try to bring more sporting events into our county. I'm working with um Benedictine and the Rec Office and the YMCA and the school districts in order to try to bring those in. Um I do not have any weird pipe dreams of that we're going to bring in six hundred baseball teams. We don't have the capacity for that. Um but as I was sitting in a conference and there is a town in Western Kansas that got two hundred room nights based off of a Scrabble tournament, I thought we can do that. So um we are working on that. We are also working on church tours. And there's, there's a lot of ins and outs involved in that. And that's going to be kind of to offset our haunted. So why not bring both souls to the table, right? Um and we launched a new website last year for our visit Atchison and and we have two new social media platforms this year. And we have started using TikTok, whether you like it or not, it's out there. So um we have started using TikTok and Snapchat to kind of get to our younger one. We are also working on a marketing campaign for bus tours and also for um association conferences to bring those into town. And one of those is, we won one of those RFPs, which will be here in November. So um I want to let you guys know how our, the lack of funding this year um phased us. We had a, an amazing um program. It's called Placer AI. And what that did for us was I, if I had a business that was looking for where to put the best billboard, right, this is a, I can tell you how many cars go up and down boom, seventy-three highway or fifty-nine highway for that great visibility. Um if I have a business looking to open up on a certain street, what's the traffic look like? What's the demographic? So I could hone into any area um and see, for example, our Muddy River Music Festival, I could go in and say on September thirteenth, how many people were down at the riverfront. I could tell you how many people were down there. I could tell you their age. I could tell you their gender, um their ethnicity. I could even drill down and tell you um how much they pay for their pets on a monthly basis. Scary information, but it's great for direct marketing. and tar- micro target marketing as well. Um and I could see what zip codes we were also bringing to town for different events or on a regular basis. Um so it also helps you try to get to um to different businesses of like, if you're looking to open a new business, what is your demographic that you're looking for? So it helped with that. Um the city of Acheson was looking for, there was an issue with some traffic control with some new housing. And so I was able to pull up a report to show them how many cars go up and down that street every single day without them having to pay for a huge study. So um with the funding cut in twenty-twenty-five, I no longer have that tool in my tool belt. Um it was something that if I had to choose between this and this. So unfortunately, that was a choice I made.
I've got a question for you. This uh placer. Do they work out the county as well?
Yep.
Mm-hmm, I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, so any anytime anybody asks me any information, um I can even pull up anywhere in the United States. Um so I was able to take, for instance, when we brought in Tiger Lily Gold for Muddy River, I was able to go in and look at other cities that they played that were in our same um population and micro-target those zip codes that attended. So if they were, let's say they played in Acheson, I'm not trying to get Acheson here because I already know that Acheson's coming, right? So what I'm trying to do is find the zip codes that were outside of six-six-zero-zero-two and target those in my social media marketing. So who will travel to see them? So it's, it's for events, but it's also for economic development as well. So if you guys needed a road, you know, see how many cars really go down it. I can tell you. Well, I could, I can anymore, but um and one of the other things that we had to pull apart um were some of the community events that we um do downtown. Um and where do we how do we, how do we make up the, the money that we no longer have? So we've had to downsize on a few of those things. Um so and to let you know where, I've told you where we are and where we are going. Um my biggest thing is to, we are the Acheson area. And so I've been working with a like um Buzz out in Ethingham. I worked with him on a couple of things to try to show, show what we can do for them, the resources that we can provide. Um so I'm reaching out to people not in just Acheson. Um the other thing is I have a five-year goal of getting an incubator space up and running. So we all know that we are not going to get these huge, we're never going to get a Kohl's, we're not going to get a Maurice's, we're not going to get any of the big businesses to come. All of our businesses here are going to have to be homegrown. And so an incubator space allows for someone who is starting up not to have to pay rent. Um and so they can utilize their, the capital that they do have to get started, right? So there's a process, but that is my five-year, my three to five-year. I really like the three, but um so that we can start building those entrepreneurs and bring them, bringing actual businesses, homegrown businesses to fruition for them. So, any questions?
Where's that information coming from? Are they monitoring phones?
Placer?
Yeah.
Um yes, so it's all tied to your phone. And even if you think that you're really smart and have all of your stuff shut down, um if you have your email connected to your phone, which most of us do, um and you have, let's see, say a dog, so you have a Chewy account and that Chewy account has you put in your email and then they send you emails to your email account and then you check it on your phone. That's how I know how much you spend on your pet.
One more reason to keep my flip phone.
Yes. Yes, if you come to Muddy River, they're not counting you.
Yeah, so it does, it obviously doesn't count anybody that doesn't have a cellphone.
I'm just more broad on Big Brother's watchy.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, flip phones don't count. So um yeah, so the smartphone is the smartphone.
And your ask is fifteen thousand.
And I will send you guys all of the, any documentation um that you guys require um. Mark had told me in the email that we have your guys' documentation from last time, but I'll be honest, I don't know what that was.
Okay.
Again, I'm learning what I don't know.
And the fifteen thousand would get Placer AI back on your toolbox and you would be able to utilize that for uh for someone like us. Like if we had a need and wanted to know a number, we could call you and say, hey, Jill, run this place for us and let us know.
Yeah, and I have a couple. So um whatever documentation you guys need, I can also, I have some placer um reports I printed off before I lost access to it. Um just so I would have that. So I can send you guys a, a place a report so that you guys can see what it kind of looks like. Cause it gives you traffic patterns and everything, so.
And also when you get your new website this evening, I think that would, I just tried to look on the county website to see if we integrated with you to even have like maybe a link on there, uh which when I search you, it still has old information. So we need to get that updated. Um so if you want to send that to us as well at commissioners@atcoks.org, then we can.
Say that again, Casey?
Yep, it's commissioners@atcoks.org and then we can get it to our IT to get that updated.
Okay.
So that the correct information is on here.
The web, our website will stay the same.
So it'll be Acheson, Kansas dot net.
Mm-hmm, that's the chamber website.
And then we just need to update your information. Um because it's still Jim Roland and just make sure it's right. So I can actually send you an email with this and you can tell us what needs to be updated.
Okay.
I'll just do that. Um do you guys have any other questions for Jill?
The last uh funded year was twenty-twenty-four, then we had five thousand each for Chamber and
Main Street.
Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
So were you able to get by on that?
Um so the placer um is eighty-four hundred dollars a year. My first price from them was fifteen thousand dollars. And then I negotiated a little bit with them and got it for eighty-four. So that's the vast majority of that, but it's used across all planes, right? It's used not only in the chamber, but the Main Street and the CBB, and it's used for economic development as well. So it's pricey, but it's useful.
Question for you two. So the county cleanup. What is the city side of that? Let's see, we have signs out here. Is the chamber, is the city involved? Is it just a strictly a county and do we need to provide dumpsters?
So historically, um two, this will be our third year. So two years ago was homegrown in the beginning. The city uses their packers. The city is on board to help promote it, hang fl- hang um the banners. The chamber was nice enough to allow us to temporarily try a tire pickup, which quickly was like, all of us didn't realize the need. Um and so maybe the chamber parking lot year two was not the right place to.
I, I will agree with that.
To do that because we were flinging tires by hand, trying to get them stacked and monitoring it around the clock because you'd have a nighttime drop of a mess. Um so then last year, we did that trailer um that's at the solid waste facility and everybody felt better about it. But the chamber helps us promote it um on their chamber chatter and website. Um have we got you the flyer? You were on that email from Stacy.
Yeah, I have the flyer.
So the cities, everybody's.
Okay, but you guys were discussing placing uh dumpsters in county locations. Do we, is there anything necessary to be placed in the District One?
So.
And who would? Additionally, what have we done here?
That we should commute Stacy and Clinton, I think.
At the city.
Yeah, had communicated that because like uh the first year, we had Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So on Sunday, out at the recycle center um off seventy-three, the city had two trash packers and we had our people out there slicing tires, different things. But we realized year two, that Sunday, we had like a lady bring a TV and maybe another one, but it wasn't really. So then we pivoted last year and just did Friday, Saturday. But I know the city is still involved. I just don't know the answer of who Stacy communicates with, um but we can find that out and make sure you have that information.
Yep, I had sent the information on which cities of the third class needed dumpsters and I think there was two left, so um you might contact Stacy then and see if there's someone needing somewhere else.
Sorry, no, that's okay. We didn't mean to get um from you, so um. I don't know that this is the time or place, but just historical tours, I was just curious from you because I know like everybody kind of does their own thing, right? So Amelia Earhart House has like tours and different things. For the chamber, do you do um like Acheson history tours? And the only reason I'm asking is Nick and I from Memorial Hall, we're talking about Memorial Hall last week. And he was telling me some of the history of like the Legion being in Memorial Hall and like some of the things I'm like, I wonder if that would be interesting to.
So every second Saturday, we have a historical trolley tour.
Okay.
Um and we have John Seddick, who used to be a professor, who has an amazing voice. Um and he is our narrator. Um he has also, so when I found all my, all the binders of binders, um I have a binder for everything, I think. Um I also found the African-American tour and it was not well-used. Um we used it at Juneteenth and so I've brought that to our, to February for Black History Month as well. And um I have John working on merging those two together so that we have
a history of Acheson.
We have the true history of Acheson in one tour.
Awesome. Yeah, I was just thinking about that and it um churches this weekend, St. Patrick's, I mean a historically and Mark and just, I would, I don't know. I just thought I would ask you if there was a cohesive camp like tour.
Yes.
So, nice, second Saturday. Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you guys have any other questions for Jill?
Okay. I will send you guys whatever it is that you need.
Do we need anything further from her? Other than she's sending us that example of placer?
Yeah.
No, I, I actually wouldn't mind having a copy of that because that was a wonderful presentation. I appreciate all that information.
I'll type it better. This is just my, my quick notes.
Yeah, that would be awesome. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, we're ahead of schedule, so um Mr. Bratton isn't here yet for Juneteenth. So I'm gonna um tackle a couple of these unfinished business additions. Um so I have um the purchase order from last week for Schwab Eaton um that we tabled to get some additional information. Um so I would look for a motion um for the purchase order for Schwab Eaton and the amount of twenty thousand dollars for additional engineering services um on Ottawa Road.
So move, second.
Moved in seconded. I'd just like real quick some discussion I had with Joe about this. Um and I guess it's one of those things when commissioners are asked to make a decision. Um I just encouraged us all to learn that if there's costs incurred with the decision that we're making, that we know that upfront because that was um this is expensive change order and just talking about the covert change, so. Um so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Um and then Mead Road Farm Lease. So um the county purchased twenty-five acres on Mead Road and seventy-three highway for the road and bridge facility. Um and it's mapped out to take up twelve acres. So um it adjoins with the city land bank property that is being leased out to a farmer for um agriculture use and I just wanted to know if you guys are okay with um Mr. Henderson moving forward with that farmer to go ahead and farm our twelve acres not being used um at the, at the current moment. So didn't know if you guys have any thoughts on that. Um he sent me a copy of the lease um and he's already got a commitment from the city again. Um so it would just be our twelve acres adjoining that um to continue on. But alright, so I would look for a motion to allow the county counselor to work with Mr. Armstrong on getting a lease agreement um for the twelve acres not being utilized for the road and bridge facility that the county um purchased this year. Sorry. It moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay, so we have um Memorial Hall. I had added that on there. If, we have fifteen minutes, so I'll just be mindful of, of the time um. Send that to her. So I had went and, and sat down with uh Nick, the new superintendent at the Memorial Hall to go over some of these documents. Um and I sent you guys a, a spreadsheet that I put together um with some information. But basically, we worked down through this list of, that was presented to us. Um and those expenditures for Director, Secretary, Social Security and Medicare um of ten thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars, that is paid to the Acheson Rec Commission um currently to manage the building. And then in turn, they set up rentals that aren't related to the Rec Sports Commission. Um and then it comes back to us down here in income for rentals. And just a quick glance at the ten thousand, four sixty versus the income of five thousand, it doesn't, it doesn't really make sense because we're already in the red there. Um so Nick had reached out to Mr. Wirik um to see if anything had been put in writing and nobody really has anything. Um after visiting with him, I think it's a good idea that maybe we just start from scratch um and figure out what works for all entities. Um I was able to communicate with the other two trustees last week. Um I called Mouse McKinney and I went to the Legion and met him and Mr. Pickman. Um and we went through this and I told them everything that I'm saying right now to you guys. Uh so when you add up the cost to annually per Memorial Hall based on these numbers and then adding in our insurance, we're right at like forty-eight thousand, six eighty-three. So I think, and please challenge me, but it would be in our best interest to plug Memorial Hall into CIC like we do all of our other county buildings. We can track utilities. We can have our maintenance director come up with what capital improvements need done because it's our building, we own it, we can follow that along. And then get a lease agreement in place with Acheson Rec Commission that would cover the costs of running it because they're the ones, you know, running it. But then they would be free and clear of go out and book as many events as you can and you keep that because they're doing it like. So roughly that'd be five thousand a month, um or sixty thousand a year would, would cover that and then get us on a track of the Tuck Pointing Plan or whatever it is. Um the trustees obviously would still manage that, but we have to get something in writing. So Nick's not vulnerable to us of, if we don't maintain the building, like if we have a lease agreement, then it locks them in to know like, we can't turn in the keys and mess up your programming mid-year. Like it just doesn't make sense. It, everybody needs security and we need to know what we're funding and how much it's costing us, like so. Um and so that would also take away, you know, a lot of these plumbing expenses, electrical expenses, carpentry expenses and painting expenses. Because I talked to Brian, our maintenance director this morning about it and he would be the one doing the walkthrough and coming to us like he does the courthouse. Like, here's a problem. I think we need to take care of it. I'll go get bids, you know? Cause it's our bill, I mean, we own the asset.
Yeah.
So. I don't know what you guys think about that. I just, the way it's structured now, well, it's not, I mean, it's obviously not working. And that's what I asked the trustees too. I was like, okay, so what happens? Like, you have twenty-seven hundred dollars. It's not, I mean, it's obviously not working. And that's what I asked the trustees too. I was like, okay, so what happens? Like, you have twenty-seven hundred dollars in your bank account. And if the county doesn't give more money by July or August, you lock the doors. And also for our benefit, like, we can't know two months before we're in dire need of locking the doors. Like, if, if we're paying and keeping on top of our own building, we know what's coming down the pipeline. Um, in, in accordance with the trustees, keeping them in the loop, but they seem to be on board. Everybody just wants what works for the for Memorial Hall. Like, how do we keep it open? How do we give everybody a and getting a lease agreement with recreation because they're leasing our building, I think is not a bad.
They should be okay with five thousand a month?
No, I haven't talked numbers because we, I mean, when you look here, I mean, that's what.
Well, yeah, but.
Electricity, water, insurance, it costs us roughly fifty thousand dollars. Um, I think they, that the recreation in the lease, we should write that they are responsible to refinish the gym floor annually because the roller skating is what does that and they're profiting off that. I just think anything they book though, like, they should get all the profits. Like, they lease the building, they do their thing and get, get the money coming back to their organization. They're doing the work. I mean, I don't know. It just.
Yeah. Bottom line, I'd be interested to know what what that does to increase our side of it. That's all. I, I, but I, I agree with what you're saying. I, I think we need to be involved.
Okay.
More of it. I just would like to know what, what that is because they were only asking for another fifteen thousand to get them through the end of the year. So, um, and, and, but yeah, definitely make the right steps now to, to move in that direction, get the consensus and move that direction.
So are you guys okay if we set up um, a, a budget workshop with Nick at the rec and the trustees to come here and meet with us and get our heads together and say, let's do this. Like, let's figure out a way that works for everybody so we can all feel.
I'm for exploring it. I mean.
Because they all were like, should we come to the meeting? And I'm like, well, let me fill out you guys first to see how you feel. But I definitely think the sooner, the better for us to figure this out and uh.
Yeah, I'm afraid they're not gonna go for that figure, you know, and then so then, but I know that's what it needs. Well, it means then going back to the rec and, you know, the rec giving a little more. Also, I mean, that, that's, and that's, that's, that's a good ask. I think that's a legitimate ask.
Well, I don't want to speak for him, but the impression I got from Nick is he wants to be a partner. Like, he wants this to work and he wants us all to figure out a, a way to do this that we all feel good about, so. Um, okay, so I'll reach out to them and get them scheduled with us. That sounds great. Thank you guys for looking at that. Um, oh, that was another thing I wanted to, to bring up. Because our finance director has been writing grants for Memorial Hall for us. And he was denied. Um, and I found a resolution from two thousand eight that stated that the county commission was going to guarantee to give thirty thousand dollars um, to the Memorial Hall and that was with the Kansas Department of Commerce. So since that's not happening, this could be a reason why Mark's not being successful at the grant. So I brought it to his attention, but again, something we just need to, we need to all sit down and look at all these things and the usage reports and, and probably have Brian at the table with our maintenance as well, so we can all be um, clear of what, what we're doing, so. Awesome. Alright, thank you. Alright, Mr. Bratton.
How you doing?
Good, how are you? Good morning. We are. We are ready for you, sir. Uh, we have Donald Bratton with the Juneteenth Committee um, for the twenty-twenty-six budget request. Come on up, come on up, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Alright. The person coming, I guess she's running a little bit late.
Oh, and we still have six minutes, so we can wait. We can definitely wait for her. I just saw you on the agenda and since you were here, um, but we can, yeah, we can wait.
Want to hold you up though.
Oh, you're fine. We're actually ahead of schedule, which is really, it's nice. That never usually.
Or any time.
How's the weather out there?
The weather's warming up. Yeah.
If I send that, do we want that Memorial Hall workshop to try to shoot for the twenty-nine? Is that okay? Is that okay with your schedule and budgets?
Yeah, I don't have to be late.
Okay.
Later in the day.
You just tell me what works for you and we can, because you'll want to be present as well. So if I send it for two-thirty? And that might be one of those that they might request in the evening if it doesn't work, but I'll shoot for two-thirty.
Be too late, but there's nothing on schedule until the thirteenth. Budgets that day.
Okay.
So anytime's available.
And.
From like ten.
Okay. The only thing is if it's gonna take more than one time, to get the number together for the budget.
Well, we will, and that's totally okay. I won't have a number from the county clerk until June first.
Okay, sorry.
That's when, that's when stuff really comes together is after I get it from Susan.
What do you guys prefer? Nick, uh, the twenty-ninth at two-thirty or May thirteenth wide open, so we could choose an earlier time? Okay. Or is that okay with you, May thirteenth?
At eleven o'clock, I want to get started.
Yes, sir. Two minutes and all. Yep.
If you'd let me know.
Yep, I will.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
There's just totally.
Here, could let's bring it here.
Where would you like the other thing?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good.
Wonderful, so am I.
Alright. More is yours, sir.
You're very good. My name is Don Bratton and co-chairman, Reelah Williams. And thank you for having us, first of all. And secondly, we're here representing Juneteenth and what we are, we're a committee who represents and, and celebrates the Juneteenth. That's July the nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five. That was two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation was issued. And what we do is we celebrate you, before you, you have the brochures. And it's actually a two, it has been in, on occasion, a three-day event where we celebrated the Emancipation Proclamation by educating people and just the fellowship in general. And so you've looked at that.
And this is from the brochure from last year.
Yeah.
This year, we will be celebrating Father's Day weekend, that's Saturday and Sunday. And it's open to the general public and all activities, including the food, it's free.
Exactly. Yeah. And actually, this year on our opening day, we'll be honoring um, the city's going to put a splash pad up at Elephant Park. So we're gonna be rep, they're gonna be representing, um, they're gonna
Groundbreaking.
Groundbreaking. That's what, what I'm looking for. The groundbreaking will be that day. So we're looking forward to it. Now, if you'd like to pass that around, that, that is our budget, if you will. We have a budget that we have to have restaurants, we have to have tents, rental. My trash pickup.
Just gonna make a quick coffee so that.
Sure.
Oh, that'd be great. Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Okay, very good. And uh, what am I leaving out, please?
Yes, just the um, services that we need for uh, safety.
Yeah, yeah.
EMT.
We have EMTs there, we have the police there. The, the whole time that we're open or act, actually operating, we will have uh, the police there. They've always uh, supported us. But now you're getting a good copy of the budget. This is what we have to contend with. Well, we don't have anybody on administration pay. All this we do out of our love for a community. And it isn't a black thing, it isn't a white thing, it's a black and white thing.
And community.
And community.
We reach out to the churches.
Yeah.
We reach out specifically to the pastors because we want everyone uh, involved to help us uh, celebrate.
Right.
And um, we would appreciate your support. And not only that, we would like to see you because this would be an opportunity, uh, even uh, if you choose to have a booth, you can explain to the public what exactly your role is. And so as the commissioner, so we would really like to see a representative there.
And in the past, you have always supported us. Uh, due to circumstances, I guess you don't have any control over, you weren't able to do that this year. And we're understanding of it, but if you have a, if you could find a dime there somewhere, anything that you could do to help, help us support these causes, you see what we have before us. We don't even have half of that raised yet and we're, we're, we're open, we're praying that we'll get there, but we sure would uh, love to have a little bit of financial support if you could squeeze a nickel or dime out of the budget and we realize that you're on a tight budget. We understand that, but at the same time, this is for the community. This isn't July the fourth, but it is July the fourth. By that, I mean we're not supporting. It's not July the fourth seventeen seventy-six, but it's June the nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five. And we're all supporting, we're all in this together and we're just asking for your support. You have in the past. And I know you'll do what you can to help us and for that, we say thank you in advance.
Yes, sir. Um, and what is your ask for twenty-twenty-six?
How much are you asking for?
Two thousand.
Okay.
Just two thousand. That's what you've given us before.
We didn't know if anything was different. And just so you know, we do have control over the decisions that are made, so.
Well, we'll say.
Not easy decisions, but we definitely have control over.
Bless us with, we would be most appreciative because um, as volunteers, we're sacrificing as well. And um, a lot of the finances come out of our pockets.
Amen.
And it is expensive for us as well, but we do it because we believe in Juneteenth and it's our responsibility. But we would like any financial support that we can get. And even if it's not just from the commit, the county itself, but even for uh, if you feel that you would like to uh, donate, we have uh, sponsors. Uh, historical sponsors up to forty-nine dollars, heritage sponsor fifty to five hundred. But it's so forth and so on. So if you would pledge, uh, make copies, if you. Yeah. We, we, we are open to all donations, so.
Is this okay to share on our?
Yes, ma'am.
Indeed.
On our social media.
Yes. And anyone else that would like a, a copy?
Wonderful.
We would be happy to make copies for you, so that you can uh, donate.
I was gonna say, some of you have been having.
Yeah, I worked the um, blow-up baseball hitting. And it was so much fun. Those kids are a blast.
Thank you so much.
Very good. Yes.
And we appreciate, again, we appreciate your support and not only the, the tangible finances, but we would like to see you. And so we are extending this invitation to the community. Um, please come up to the park. We want you there. On Saturday, we have a lot of activities, but on Sunday, we have a community church service. And all the churches come together. This uh, Sunday, Sunday of Juneteenth is gonna be the pastor from Ebenezer Baptist Church. But we use our local pastors and so we do a rotation. And so usually the, on that day, most of the churches uh, come in fellowship and they don't have churches at their uh. But we would love to see you at our meeting. Anyone else would like a copy? And you could also, if you would, take these to your churches and see if your churches would be interesting in uh, helping us. And, and we thank you so much. And even if you don't have the finances, just your parents, you can volunteer. Because we serve uh, lots of senior citizens. We also, we have some people that will fix mills for them and actually take it to their homes. And um, we have anywhere from fish to ribs to chicken, to brisket, to uh, turkey legs and all the trimmings. And so we will deliver you uh, some food. And so, but we would just love to have your presence.
Our motto is unity in the.
In the community.
That's our motto.
You guys have any questions for?
Thank you so much for having.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Thank you for the wonderful presentation. We appreciate.
And again, if you would like to have a booth where you could just come uh, and just greet the public. And so they'll know what your role is and what you were doing. That would be so much appreciated.
Alright.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see everyone. Thank you. Yep, perfect, because we're ahead of schedule, so I was gonna. Thank you. Okay, let me finish this email. Would you like to invite the Stephen Clay out there? I thought he said fif- fifteen.
For the.
Memorial Hall workshop.
Yeah.
He said May?
Yeah. I'm inviting them. Hopefully it's gonna work out. Noon? Eleven, noon?
Well, yeah, he said it was pretty open for that day, so yeah, when that time frame, I don't know what he said. Well, yeah, he said it was pretty open for that day, so yeah, when that time frame, I don't know what he said.
Let's just shoot for noon. Alright, so I would like to ask you guys in the room, I assume everyone's here to discuss the Ashton County Lake.
The, the ladies that just left are, they're using the restrooms.
Okay, well, I was just gonna ask your opinion because we've set a time of eleven thirty. And that's what, I know there were gonna be some folks that joined via Zoom. Um so typically, we like to stick with that timeline so that everyone's aware. Um but with that being said, I know your time is precious, it is being reported. So if those of you in attendance would want to speak earlier. Um I could invite you up and, and go ahead and get started a little bit early. Which would then run through eleven thirty, so everybody would still have of the opportunity, but. Completely up to you guys, typically, we stick with the timeline, um but just wanted to ask.
I think since eleven thirty was the time that was put out to the public.
Yep, just, just wait until then, okay. So if you, you're, everybody's good with that, and we'll just sit idle here um a bit. So I'm gonna go ahead and just touch base on notices and communications then, and we can do our executive session. Does that sound fine? I mean, cause we have fifteen minutes, so, alright, so um notices and communications, we have our Atchison Countywide cleanup for April twenty fifth and twenty sixth. Um and the link on our agenda will allow you to find more details on that. We have our tax sale coming up May sixth at three P M uh at Memorial Hall. And we also will do a quick um. Executive session with H R Finance and Maintenance for fifteen minutes. I'm gonna run and make sure H R confirmed finances here, I just wanna confirm maintenance.
Or are we gonna have everybody leave for fifteen minutes?
To be, I mean, otherwise, we just sit here idle, we might as well get our stuff done, if you don't want to. Well, I'm just asking.
I, I, I know, but I kinda hate to.
That's fine. Okay, well, we can. We can wait.
What about the Schwab Eaton?
We already did that.
Oh, that's right. I didn't cross, I crossed the wrong thing off, sorry.
Yeah, that's all we got on our agenda today, so. Oh, we can pass the sign in sheet around. So I created a sign in sheet for this, so we can keep track of um interested parties and everyone's contact information. Um so we can continue the, the discussions and communication, so. Uh if you guys wouldn't mind just signing that and giving us your co- contact information uh so that we have that, that would be wonderful.
I'll just send it up here.
Placer thing, figure out who's here and what kind of dogs we have and all that stuff.
That was interesting, I didn't know that. The placer thing Joe was talking about.
Yeah, I think. Most of us understand that that's going on, I mean, you know, I can be at Walmart. In a, in an aisle looking at something, and if I happen to look down at my, one of my social media sites. It will reflect advertisements. For the things that I'm in the same aisle with, so items that I, so I, I think everybody knows. That if you have a smart filter, you're being, you're being monitored in some way, somehow. So if, if the chamber can use it, so be it, you know, I, I. And, and we were on the same page, I thought, you know, that's something we can use for the county.
Absolutely, we can.
And so. That justifies that funding.
I just wanted to watch how it looks like, does she go to, I mean, cause she was speaking of events and stuff, I, I just, it's interesting to me. To see.
Yeah, I, I really thought her presentation was spot on, I mean, she covered everything and. I don't know, would this group understand that we are, that we do have a evening?
Not yet.
I just wanna make sure.
I think we may have to entertain, have a business talk too. Well, I mean, if we have one exclusively for that an evening.
I've been to some Walnut Township meetings, they can pack them in here, I promise you. I'm like, there was times I was sitting over underneath the um. The coat rack in the corner because it was so, it was packed, so. It's just nice to have this set up and layout and be able to record and all the things.
If we need to, we can move the desks out, they take up a lot of space.
Thank you, sir, I was just gonna get that out of the way.
They don't let our size, you know, scare you.
Was it?
Don't let our size scare you, it's just how we are growing out in the lake, so.
Mr. Anderson, do you have Mr. Armstrong's contact? If not, I can say, I'll just do that, just so you have. I know, that's my phone. It's.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, yeah.
About eight minutes? So, actually, let me just print this out, um but based on. There's no. There's actually increases. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So we talked about road sides and like once a year. Twenty twenty. Like me, if there was less. You're being less. You know what I mean? And even, you're being less, but. Something we can ask. One thing that's still out in my inbox is um a solid waste recycling proposal from that gal that the clerk sent to us. I'm gonna forward that on to Solid Waste Director, just. Okay, Susan, one thing to note is um I'm not adding the Memorial Hall Workshop to the agenda because. We're built out till May sixth, so um just so you can make a note of that. Okay, awesome, thank you. Alright, it is eleven thirty, um and we. All right, it is eleven thirty um and we have our Atchison County Lake discussion uh scheduled today. So um we will just do one at a time um and you can come up here and sit under the microphone, introduce yourself, and uh we would love to hear uh your thoughts on that. So um. Want to go first? Thank you for. So they're leaving.
Good morning, commissioners. Um my name is Jessica Saxton. I'm a current resident of the Atchison County Lake. While I grew up in Brown County and attended school in Horton, um I spent countless days and nights at the lake throughout my teen years. It has always been a place of peace and belonging for me and for so many others. After high school, I had no intention of staying in this area. I had bigger dreams like many young people do. But as my husband and I began raising our children and navigating the stress of modern life and demanding careers, we found ourselves longing for the quiet. Grounding peace of the country. The kind of peace we remembered from our own childhoods, the kind we felt each time we came back to visit family. Eventually, our careers allowed it where we can make the decision to return home. After nearly two decades of living and working in the city, we built a home in the country right by the lake. We came here to find peace, to let our kids grow up with freedom, to ride their bikes to their grandmas and to play outside safely. Would I have moved here knowing this was a destination for a potential destination for the city folk who want to try out hunting for the weekend? If it were turned into a private hunting tourist destination like one of the suggestions at previous meeting? Would I be able to enjoy the wildlife and the beautiful views if the vegetation is bulldozed to make more farmlands? Well, I still have the peace we came here for. Can I let my kids roam freely? That's not the life we envisioned when we chose to return just a year ago. Peace is the reason that people love this lake. It's the reason it remains so popular in the community. I've heard it said a few times in this meetings that no one uses the lake. That couldn't be further from the truth. As someone who lives there, I can assure you, there is never a time when this lake isn't being enjoyed. Every evening, people are driving by with their windows down on their side by sides. Families fish along the shore. Um. Kids explore the woods. School field trips from the Everest Middle School visit regularly. For half the year, the lake is full of tents and campers nestled into the winding roads. This is a place of connection and community. To take this lake away from the public. Is to give our young people one more reason to leave. And I ask you, why should they stay? What does this county offer them in terms of recreation and quality of life if even this is taken away? In that part of this the county, if they want to do something just as simple as going out and going fishing. The closest lake is in Horton, which means that their business will now go to Brown County and not stay here in Atchison County. Now. I want to briefly address a topic that has come up repeatedly in these discussions, which is eminent domain. I know many of you are well aware with of what that is, but for anyone who is listening or seated behind me. Eminent domain is the government's power to seize private land for public use with compensation, with just compensation provided to the homeowner. It is typically used for roads, schools, or projects that serve the public good. And that's how this lake and many others like it across the state. Came to be during the nineteen thirties. But the law is clear. Property acquired via eminent domain cannot be sold or transferred to a private entity except under very specific circumstances. And under Kansas law, that must continue to be used for public use, public improvements, and at certain occasions, economic purposes. Have any potential buyers of the lake been made aware of these requirements? Have they been informed that any land obtained through eminent domain may carry the right of first approved first refusal? Which means the original landowners or their heirs must be offered the chance to repurchase the land before anyone else. The county councillor has stated that this land wasn't acquired through a condemnation case. But that's not what the community has known. For many years. Many area residents, including the original landowners and their families, have heard the same story for generations from their parents and their grandparents. Stories of how the lake came to be. Why did the previous county commissioners in nineteen eighty and again in twenty thirteen look into selling this lake and then conclude that they couldn't? What documents did they see that you have not seen? What did they know that you don't? Mr. Henderson also stated this was not a WPA project, that it predated the WPA by several years. But a simple online search shows otherwise. Not only does the New Deal website list this lake as a WPA project. I found hundreds of articles from the nineteen thirties from new paper newspapers all over the state. Describing this very lake, the jobs it created, and how it helped our community during a time of national hardship. And these articles very very clearly named it as a WPA lake. So if I can find this information in just a few hours online, what else are we missing here? What else aren't you being told? Frankly, it gives the appearance. That the hope is no one will remember. The original generation is gone and their descendants may have moved away. But some of them are still here. Three families whose land was originally part of the New Deal. Still reside either on the lake or nearby, and all three of them are represented in this room today. Commissioners, you have a responsibility, not just to the current residents, but to the legacy of this county and to the people who gave up the land, homes, and livelihoods for greater public good. What precedence does it set if we allow public land? Once taken from its residence to be sold for private gain? You'll hear from others after me, fellow community members who are deeply concerned, just as I am. And this is just a small sampling of the community, as many more wanted to be here today but couldn't due to work schedules and timing of this meeting. Please listen what they have to say, whether it's personal stories, history, or ideas how to make the lake profitable for the county. Please take these suggestions into consideration and deeply consider what you will lose. Once the money is gone, what will you have gained is what you have gained worth what you have lost. This lake means something, not just to me, but to the entire community, and we deserve to have our voices heard.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and. Let me.
You want to say something?
Okay.
You need help?
Yes. I'm lying.
There's. Thank you, June. There you go.
Glenda Torkelson, uh five five six eight, three hundred and twenty-fourth Road, Horton, Kansas, the south side of the Atchison County Lake. Yes, I'm on the property of the Atchison County Lake. I'm a retired teacher, uh five different states. I taught in uh five years in Germany, moved here in nineteen eighty-seven from Las Vegas, Nevada, where my husband was flying the F sixteen and retired to the farm. And which is where he was raised is he was born in August of uh nineteen forty-three, so the roots are there. My question to you is. It deals with the WPA way that it was made. It has four pillar, four exits or entrances, northeast, south, and west. At each of those four, it has pillars. There are two pillars at each of those entrances. The east entrance, the north pillar of the north entrance of the east entrance was. Knocked down by a construction, a person didn't mean to, didn't mean to, knocked it down. And I happened to notice it and I called Roden Bridge and they said, uh oh, thank you for reporting it. And that was good. That was very, very good. And then I waited and waited months and then all of a sudden, nothing was being done. So I called. Uh, a county person and they said, no, we don't have anything grasshopper township. But we don't have any control over that. Would you call the Roden Bridge, which I did. At Roden Bridge, Atchison County, and I told them and they said, there's no money. There's no money to repair it. I understand that. I get that. My next statement to the lady on the at the Ridge and Burn, I said. What happened to the money that the company that knocked down the pillar sent to the company to the county? They sent money to the county to repair that pillar that was made by the WPA in the thirties. She said, it was? Yes, ma'am, it was. She was gone about five minutes, came back. She said, oh, it's on the docket. Oh, for repair. That's great. That's great. That's wonderful that something was going to be done. And. To this date. Um, I saw two two gentlemen in a truck about the next day after my conversation and then they were there to repair it, they said. And then all of a sudden, another truck pulled up. I left and they it was not repaired. My question. What happened to the money that was allocated for the pillar? On the east entrance to the Atchison County Lake and the pillar was made by the WPA in the thirties. My father-in-law and my husband and and his dad, my husband's grandpa, and he helped dredge that lake with mules and sleds. And now the pillar that's down. Built by them has not been repaired. I don't understand. I would like an allocation or some notification or something that shows me what happened to the money. And yes, I know the money was there to repair it. Any questions?
Uh, yes, ma'am, you are correct. Um, there is ten thousand dollars um for the entrance. Good. That is money sitting in account um that needs to be. To to fix the pillar. There is also twelve thousand in an account that has to be used for the lake. Um, it was part of the CFAP, which is Community Fisheries Assistance Program.
Right.
And KWDP as well. So we um got a briefing on on those two, but to answer your question, yes, ma'am, the money is there and we need to get that scheduled to get that.
Okay, because so you can understand my question.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Hundred percent.
Appreciate.
And just in the defense of sometimes. It's second nature for our staff to answer a question without getting the information. So I I apologize that they weren't aware of that. Um, but yes, we we have clarity that the money is there and it will be repaired.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Hey, good morning. Thank you for coming.
It's a good day. My name is Anthony Doll. Um, I live at six, seven, seven, nine, three, and eighteen through and uh. We still have a little strip of land on the lake over there. And so um anyway, I saw this on the website, so I thought this is important to talk about. And yeah, we've been involved in the lake for quite a while. That goes back and thanks to Jessica for obviously looking for some stuff for us. At the end of the day, uh our family was one of that uh sold partial land to get the lake started over there. That's what I was also told too as well. At some point in time, if it ever reverts back from the government, it would go back to families. I have no documentation on that, but. More of a along the line of just was saying, it's to me, it's really important because it's a treasure of Atchison County and unfortunately it's unutilized, in my opinion. Um, it is has gone down into a state of disrepair um for quite some time, in my opinion. Some have always been done. Matter of fact, it looks really good in certain parts today. They did this last weekend. It looks awesome over there in parts. At the end of the day, I think that's been forgotten on some people's cases, but from people that live around there. And I get I agree with Jessica wholeheartedly. It gets used. Uh, go drive through there. It's a wonderful place and is a treasure that belongs to Atchison County, and I'd sure like to see that. I am totally opposed to the sale of this of this part. Again, we only have a small little strip over there, nothing compared to what Glenda and the Saxons are involved in, but certainly to me, guys, it's really, it's really something that's to be proud of. It's something that we've vested in years and years and years, obviously. Coming up on a hundred years, and I think it's something that we need to keep in mind that it's not just for um again, sell for just for making something else happen. It's really part of our community. It needs to stay that way, in my opinion. So um continue to market it, continue to to promote it. Uh, what do we do? If you got it, if you got the can of paint, I will go paint those uh shelter houses myself. Uh, if that's what it takes to do it, I'd love to do it because I live a whole mile and a half away, two miles away from there and love to do it, guys, but um we just moved back ourselves here a couple of years ago. Uh, I have farmed that area. Uh, my entire life, as as did my dad, his dad, and my great, my great grandfather. So uh we're four generations deep in that. We'd like to keep it that way and anything I can do to help keep this in the county's um. Asset to do that, to make sure that everybody gets to enjoy it. Uh, please let me know. Again, I appreciate your time and your efforts, everything you guys do.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Been recognizing. We've been a long time.
Oh, hi. My name is Trudy Wishrup. I'm actually reading a statement for another patron first. I have copies for you.
Thank you.
To the Atchison County Commissioners, we are writing in strong opposition to the proposed proposed sale of Atchison County Lake. As lifelong residents and adjacent landowners, we are deeply concerned by the county's renewed interest in selling this public asset. This issue has come up in the past and was ultimately dismissed due to unresolved questions about the legal rights surrounding the land. To our knowledge, based on historical accounts passed down from our grandparents and other longtime families, the land for this project was leased, donated, or conditionally transferred under agreements tied to the WPA Works Projects Administration. Project that developed the lake. We believe there may have been a provision ensuring that if the lake were ever abandoned or sold, the original landowners would be given the first right of refusal or that the land would revert back to them. We urge the county to pause any discussion of a sale until a complete legal review is conducted. This includes examining the original abstracts, deeds, and agreements made when the lake was constructed. Any attempt to sell not only is not only without fully investigating these historical obligations would be considered not only irresponsible but potentially unlawful. We are also concerned about the lack of transparency surrounding this proposal. If there is already a potential buyer involved or a deal in the works, this should be disclosed to the public. A rushed transaction of public land, especially land with such historical and community value, raises serious ethical concerns. Residents deserve to be fully informed and included in decisions of this magnitude. Another argument presented by the county is the cost of upkeep. We ask the commissioners to be honest with the public about what upkeep is actually being done. To our knowledge, there is currently no caretaker employed, no utility utilities operating at this location and only minimal mowing. The roads around the south end are barely maintained, and the spillway has not been addressed in decades. To suggest that the lake represents a financial burden to the county does not reflect the reality of its current condition. If genuine maintenance concerns exist, then other options such as local volunteer support, grant funding, or revised usage agreements should be explored before considering a permanent sale. We would also like to ask how the county plans to address road access should the lake be sold. Some roads in the area are already designated as minimum maintenance. Would these be closed, barricaded, or reclassified? What input would be given to adjacent landowners whose access to fields and property could be affected? If roads are altered, will the county work cooperatively with landowners to maintain access points and drainage? Finally, we want to address the larger issue of what this sale could mean for the community. If this land is purchased by a private hunting club or pay-to-hunt operation, tensions between adjacent landowners and new owners are inevitable. The lake, the land surrounding the lake is privately owned, and in all likelihood, outside hunters would not be per permitted access beyond the lake property. Trespassing boundary disputes and hostility are likely outcomes. This is not just a hypothetical scenario. It is a serious consequence that would impact longstanding neighborly relations. Atchison County Lake is one of the few remaining public use natural spaces in our area. It holds historical significance and sentimental value to generations of families who have used it for fishing, walking, relaxing, and gathering. This is not just about land. It is about community legacy and shared responsibility. We respectfully ask the commissioners to halt this process, conduct the necessary legal and historical research, and commit to full transparency moving forward. Selling this land under unclear authority, limited public input, and vague justification is unacceptable. Sincerely, Jody Leatherman, Greg Knutson, Concerned Landowners and Patrons of the Atchison County Lake.
Thank you.
As I said, I, my name is Trudy Wishrup, and my home and school are just west of the county lake. Yes, thank you. My students are with me today. I'm sure you know that the county lake was created under the Works Progress Administration, which was a New Deal agency that employed folks down on their luck during the Great Impression. It was truly a win-win as projects were usually construction of public infrastructure such as parks, roads, school, and other public buildings. I'm sure you know that the County Lake Project was approved under the Water Conservation Program and built on a county works release project. The project was good for the county and good for the people working for it. I'm sure you know that this particular project started in nineteen thirty-six and created fourteen thousand days of labor for men in need of work. I'm sure you know that the County Lake feeds Clear Creek, which supplies water for cattle and crops down the line. I'm sure you know that the County Lake is home to many different species of plants and animals. Many birds stop there on their way during migration. Eagles can often be seen flying around the lake during the winter and wildflowers bloom throughout the summer around the lake. But what you may not know is that my grandfather, Claude Jones, loved this space. And that led to grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and great-great-grandchildren that continue to love this space. My mother was born in nineteen thirty-three, so many of her childhood photos growing up were taken at the lake. The photo that you see on top, I'm told is now underwater. The only family photo that I have of my mother's family, which is at the bottom, was taken at the East Shelter House. You may not know that my parents would have get-togethers at the lake. It was a big enough space for my nine siblings and their growing families to spread out and enjoy each other. My parents would often take me fossil hunting at the spillway. You may not know that my own children have returned turtles that they found on the road to the lake. They've ridden their bikes to the spillway and back home. And they've made wonderful memories fishing from the bank together. You may not know that all of those people in those photos taken at the lake are now gone. For those of us with memories of family members no longer with us, the lake is often a place of remembrance and gratitude for the times that we spent with them. I hope you know that this space is pretty important to many generations of people, both from your community and from outside of your community. History exists partially so that we can learn from it. Much like the project that was started eighty-nine years ago that brought so much goodness to the people involved. I think there's a way to make the county lake good for the county and good for the people again. I would encourage you to continue talks with a public meeting dedicated solely to the county lake discussion. During a time that is more convenient for your constituents. Thank you. Really just like, just to follow up on her last statement, we have confirmed. And the count. The county clerk, I go confirm she would be available, right? In that chat.
Yes.
Of the day.
Yes.
Remind me. We set Memorial Hall right after, so I wanna say it's May fifteenth at seven P M. Okay, everybody, so May fifteenth, seven P M in this room. We're dedicating to another round of county lake discussion. So if everybody wants to, and we'll put that out as well. Um, what we've learned the first time of putting it out, it'll be in bigger folder. And that was no intention, by the way, just to give feedback on that, but we will make sure that we get that that time out for for everyone, so. Okay, anyone else in the room want to speak before I start calling on Zoom? Okay, thank you.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Cindy Saxton. There are currently four generations of Saxtons living on this land. Around the lake and my grandchildren are the seventh generation of Saxons to call this beautiful area home. I strongly believe that the lake should remain as it is. A vital habitat for wildlife such as bald eagles, wild turkeys, deer, and migrating pelicans and geese. However, I do have significant concerns that I feel should be addressed. Currently, there is no recorded easement for the driveway that provides access to my home. This is also the route used by the cities of Everston, Horton, to access their well sites, which are part of our. Property. If the lake were sold to a new owner who decided not to honor the existing access. I could be landlocked with no way in or out. In addition, it would prevent maintenance personnel from accessing the wells. Should the lake be sold, I would like to mitigate this risk by purchasing the two-point-five acres acres of land. South of the road, which I currently use as a lane, which I actually thought was my property for so many years. This land was originally part of the Saxton property before being included in the W P A Lake Project in the nineteen thirties. Had there been adequate research conducted before the sale was considered. The county would have known about my situation as a resident and a property user. I also have concerns about the process of offering the lake for sale. It seems there was a little consideration given to the families who originally owned the land. A more thorough consultation with these families could have led to a more respectful and productive discussion about the future of the lake. It would have been courteous to offer the opportunity to purchase the lake to the original landowners. Or their heirs first, rather than pursuing a business transaction for financial gain. Many of us who pay taxes and care for this area were not consulted about these decisions. I understand that maintaining the lake can be costly. However, I would appreciate seeing a detailed itemization of those costs and I think that's been said before, so we're all repeating the same thing. We are not seeing the maintenance that you envision is happening, so maybe your money's going where you don't know it's going. Um, I know, for instance, that insurance money was received for the pillar. Glendon mentioned that. When will that happen? Is there a date that we can count on? This has been over a year. Um, and it's, you know, we're used to seeing that beautiful uh limestone pillar and it's not there. You know, first world problems. Uh, additionally, since the caretaker position was eliminated, there has been minimal maintenance. While the grounds are mowed occasionally, primarily around the holidays, overall upkeep has been inadequate. Any deterioration of the lake property can be traced back to decisions made at the county leadership level. We do receive occasional road maintenance, but are the last in the area to be plowed during the winter storms. This January, we were trapped for five days before a plow arrived. It wasn't until a neighbor went through with a tractor that we were able to leave our homes. It feels as though the residents who use the Atchison County Lake for recreation and relaxation are being overlooked. If the county had consulted with us, the community, and considered the potential for revitalizing the lake. There could be an opportunity to generate income as the lake was once a thriving asset. I mean, so many things happened out there when it was first built. I understand the county has limited resources, but there are residents who would be willing to volunteer. If a clear plan was set in place to revitalize the lake's potential. In conclusion, I strongly believe that keeping the lake as it is would result in fewer problems for the county. If you are open to further discussion, I am willing to. Set up a time to meet with my attorney to explore purchasing the land I need to ensure proper access to my property. If you choose to sell, uh, that would be detrimental to all of us if you choose to sell. Thank you for your time and consideration. I appreciate it.
It's nice to meet you.
Oh, are we gonna answer any of the? We wanna wait till the end.
Yeah, we'll just wait till the end. Hi.
Morning.
Thank you for coming.
A couple of minutes yet.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, oh my gosh. This is just an outline of what I'm gonna talk about, so you guys can kind of follow along if need be. Um, write notes, draw pictures, whatever seems fit. All right, well, good morning. Uh, I am Ian Saxton. I mean, I think you've met the majority of my family behind me. Uh, my family and I, we have lived at the Atchison County Lake for over a hundred and sixty-five years. That's pretty awesome. Um, just a little background on myself and who I am. Um, I actually work in Topeka. Uh, I work for the Kansas Army National Guard as the Warehouse Operational Manager, which that's a very fancy way of saying. I uh, I ensure that all federal property that is owned by the government is transferred and accounted for. In a legally, morally, and fiscally responsible way. That's what I do. So, just just so you know who I am. Um, mine is more of questions because I think you've heard from behind me, there's a whole lot of compelling. Words that are being said. I just have a lot of questions. Uh, my first question is uh. Is gonna be the walk-in hunting, okay? It's if the sale is finalized or bid, on that date post-for-sale, will that date be the end of the hunting and fishing on the lake? The only reason I bring that up is because of safety concerns. Because if somebody's going around trying to look at this place, are they gonna get? You know, something bad gonna have it to them? That that's why I bring that up. So, um, my second question, the eagle's nest. I know we've talked about eagles flying around. Um, so my main question is, what is the strategy? For informing the U S Fish and Wildlife Services to comply with the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act? Will potential buyers be informed before the development or drastic environmental changes occur? Um, third question. Has the Kansas State Historical Preservation Society been informed of the potential sale? Of the lake due to the current request project work order for repairs on the shelter houses and the outhouses? That's, there's one currently out there. That number is twenty-five dash zero four dash zero two seven.
Twenty-five dash zero four dash zero two seven.
Yes, ma'am. And uh, I think the P O C is, I think your email is mentioned for that, so.
P O C.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm I'm acronyming you. I apologize. Point of contact. Yeah, point of contact. Next question, the tax role. I know that's something that I know you spoke very much about. Um, but for clarification. Do the county commissioners not intend to sell the lake for a nonprofit? That is, that is the overall. Um, but is there a guarantee that once the lake is sold, if it is sold. It cannot be sold or utilized as a nonprofit after? That is a big question because you could sell it to me and then all of a sudden, hey, Boy Scouts, come on in and then it's nonprofit. So then that tax return is it is it worth, is essentially the juice worth the squeeze? That's and that's the selling of the lake. Um, the next one is operational costs. And I know there's a lot been talked about it. Can you, can you give an itemized list of the operational costs for the lake? If, if you can, is insurance, uh, is that part of that number? That is, I mean, if if that could be answered right now, cuz I do have a follow-on if it is, cuz I, it's just my, the curiosity of the public as well.
So, from what I've been given, it is not. The the budget includes personal services, which is county workers.
Of course.
That go out and the roadside or go over it once a year.
Okay.
Contractual services, which is the outsourcing to have a contracted mo- mowing.
Okay.
Regularly out there. Um, then commodities, which was. What did he tell me this morning? Okay, I'll think, I asked, we got these questions. Fuel. Five thousand for the mowers that the county are operating. And then utilities is rural water five.
Okay.
Um.
That's where the old caretaker's home used to be, there's a hydrant there.
And the line is broken, so it's been shut off, but there's, and that's, that's what I know, cuz. Because that hydrant doesn't work.
So I do not know that. When I, when I communicated with Rural Water Five on if there's water throughout the lake. Um, they told me there's a meter where the old caretaker was and the line ends there.
Correct.
And then a meter, and I might be wrong, but I'm feeling like this Torkel's. One of the folks on the southeast corner, there's a meter, but there's no infrastructure in between. Um, from my understanding of talking to them.
Okay.
So, um. Insurance is within our K Camp policy. There's no insurance.
No, and that's, and that's good because looking into it, because you know Kansas statute, uh statutes, chapter forty, it says you don't need to do it. It's not, insurance is not a thing. So I'm glad that's not a cost that we are incurring. It's awesome.
Yep.
Um, last question. Um, spillway. Has the Department of Emergency Management conducted any studies on the impact of catastrophic failure? So, given the current state of the spillway, who would be held responsible if said situation happened? Cuz right now it'd be the county, right? Afterwards, if it gets sold, who would it be? Would still be the county because, okay.
I'm so glad you asked that because I was asked that last night and I have a note here to clarify with the county counselor. Of if a privately owned person were to purchase the lake and then the spillway fails, what does that look like and? How is that for the folks affected like? Um, so thank you for bringing that up cuz I would like to understand that.
Talking about like a flood downstream or?
I'm talking about, it's because if you look at it, there's a, um, and I know, I think Judy sent a picture at some point. And this is just social media, if you will, and it was part of the uh, part of the dam is collapsed, right? I think you've probably seen that as well.
Why we put that yellow gate up?
Of course.
Yep.
And so, and then there's actually cracks throughout it. Um, with with my time as the operational manager, I I talk with a lot of people who do, like the Army Corps of Engineers. And so they're like, yeah, those are some big cracks. It's just not a matter of, it it's when, when is it gonna happen?
Yep.
And so that's why I asked that question because if that goes away, everything downstream, if you will, will just get washed away and it'll be, it's bad cuz all that silt. It's gonna follow it. And so what's, there's pasture land, there's possibly buildings, there's possibly all this stuff. So who is held essentially culpable in that situation?
That's a great question when we don't have insurance and we're not required to have insured.
And and.
Yeah, all of this is very good information, so.
So, and that's, I guess I'm more of the question person, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and. Talk about my observations because I've talked with a lot of people because having the last name Saxton, being there for over a hundred and thirty, sixty-five years. They come to the people who've been there. What's the, what's the history? What's the legacy? Um, I've spoken with a lot of people who have many ideas on how to make the lake pay for itself or generate income for the county. The common consensus is that the county commissioners do not have the time needed for such a venture, which is true. There's a lot more things that you guys have to worry about and I, it's it's understandable. It's it's not a cop out, I swear. If you create a voluntary lake board that would report to you on a regular basis, whose responsibility is to oversee lake projects. Locate and apply for grants, advertise on social media, organize fundraising events. And promote positive partnerships with local vendors. And that's something that if if we do that. I'll tell you, I'll be the first one to volunteer. Because why not? I live there. So there's a lot of people in this room that would say, yeah, that's me. Um. But overall, there are many people who love this lake. You've heard them today and you're gonna hear more about it. Many of them are taught how to fish by their grandfathers at that lake. Many of them marked that one bird off their birdwatcher's list, saying, oh, there it is. Now I can finally die in peace, I guess. Discovered new plant species that were never recorded in that area before and that's happened. That's really wild. And ultimately, it's where you can go find peace in God's good graces, right? Um, my personal statement that I wanna make is personally, I find the lake, a lake, a place where all the pressure of the modern world just melts away. It's a place where you know where peace is. You understand tranquility. Be grateful for what you have. And it's a place where you can get right with God in all those situations. You ask what the lake can do? That's what the lake can do for every citizen, everybody in the county. So, I appreciate your time. Any questions of me at this time?
Thank you so much. Like this, yes, I will have many questions for you, but not at this time, but.
My, my name and information's at the top.
On the sign-in sheet, yes, that would be.
And then the questions, I have my name and then my phone number. That is my cell phone. Please, any one of you, if you have any questions, please call me. Because if I don't know the answer, you better find it. I'm gonna find it. So, thank you.
Right, sir?
You got time for one more?
Uh, yeah, we are good. We have twenty minutes left, so. And and the only reason we have that hard twelve, twelve-thirty on this one is we had um prior budget scheduled. But again, we're definitely having an evening meeting uh to further this conversation.
Well, I'm not giving you twenty minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thing, so I'm not used to have anything written down.
Oh.
So you've heard, you've heard about all the, the. Things that people have liked about the lake. I think one thing you need to do. I can tell you what to do, as as you prepare all this to get for your final answer is. Is to to put the pros and cons on your part as to what does it cost us? What are the benefits to the people? What are we gonna get out of it? What are your, what are your um property taxes you might get? Put, put all that down so everybody can see. What you're using to make a a decision on this. So that, you know, because I don't know what, we, I went to the meeting uh. Over at Dan's the other day and he was telling about some of the things, but I don't know anything about what it costs to run the lake or. Or what, what you could get out. I have, I, I am not smart enough to figure out what anybody would actually use that lake for. Other than a lake the way it is. It's in between two county roads. There's no way you can make that. Unless you shut those roads down. There's no way you can make that so that there's no, that you can limit the access in and out of there. But if you would, as you get ready to make the the final decision on it. Make the list so that everybody can see what you're expecting to get for it, what is costing you now. Um. I, I would, I would hate to see all the history that's down there just. Get pushed away cuz it really is a pretty special place.
And what was your name, sir?
Jim Jensen.
Thank you.
We don't live on the lake. We live just, my family, my parents and grandparents live just east of the lake.
Thank you so much for coming.
Well, hello, my name is Bill Meyer, and I am not an Atchison County resident, I live in Bourbon County, Kansas. But for the last four years, I've spent probably ninety-five percent of my time in. Atchison County with Glendore Torkelson, and I love Atchison County Lake. But in Bourbon County, we went through many of these same discussions you're having with Elk County Lake, uh, 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 many years ago. What, what to do with it, it's a W P A lake. And now it's finally that, after many months and years of discussion, there's work being done on it. That's a nice resource now, fishing, boating, and so forth, for people in, in Bourbon County, uh, who love it. Uh, I personally love Atchison County Lake, uh, it's exactly four point two miles from the entrance. Uh, to Glenda's driveway, to walk around the South Road, uh, try to walk across the dam, which is. It's submerged right now, uh, but you still try to do it and hope it doesn't collapse when you're walking across it. Uh, and then drive around, uh, walk around by the Saxton's property, and if that you wind up at, at Glenda's. And I was there this past Sunday, uh, walking it, uh, the four point two miles. And it was a couple of young couples with their campers down in the, the Boy Scout camping area. And the, the two guys were fishing in the lake, and the kids were playing and just having a great time. And they, they, they were driving old pickup trucks, you know, the, obviously, these were not people, wealthy people. They're enjoying the great outdoors and the beauty of the, uh, of the lake, but just think of the, the W P A history there. And history is a strange thing, you can read about it in a book. You can read about the Civil War in a book, but if you've never been to Gettysburg and stood up at the top. Of the, the, that field where the Union Army was looking down at the Confederate forces. And imagining them coming up that field, uh, to attack the Union forces and hopefully break the Union in the process. If, if you haven't lived history like that, as a, as a child or an adult, it doesn't mean the same thing. This is your history, this is, this is the most difficult economic period that our nation ever went through. Was the period from the, the Great Depression, nineteen twenty-nine and through the late thirties. Which didn't really end until the outbreak of World War Two. And. We survived in part because of what W P A did to. Keep the economy basically going, when we were experiencing twenty percent unemployment in this country. Can you imagine twenty percent unemployment, we're complaining now, because two percent, twenty percent? Uh, people begging, uh, with no, no such sense of support, people dying in the streets. Uh, it's our history, you have that wonderful piece of history on this beautiful piece of land. My plea is just an outside spectator is who enjoys it immensely. And as long as I can, at my eighty-five years of age, I will walk that four point two miles around that lake. Oh, it is so worth preserving, don't lose it, don't lose it, that's my plea to you. Thank you for giving me a few moments of your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Sir, are you, you're good, ma'am? Be you good?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, um, anyone on Zoom currently want to speak, um. In regards to the county lake? Okay. Okay, so hearing none, it, we're gonna communicate a little bit as commissioners, but if someone wants to say something, just definitely just chime in. And, um, and we'll go to Zoom. Yeah, so do you guys wanna visit about anything that?
Okay, I, I think there's some things that we could knock off, uh, right off the bat, and one of them is the roads. We investigated in-house on when the original, uh. Property became county property, and then they were gonna put the lake on it, there was a straight through road, which, of course, the lake obliterated that. So they created the current, uh, meandering roads around on both sides of the lake. Uh, and those are county roads, uh, they were never platted, we've looked into having them actually platted. If it was sale would go through, so, uh, access would stay the same. I mean, they would be county roads, uh, we can't take, uh, away people's access to their property. Uh, we, uh. Figured on doing from the West Gate to all the way on the north side, clear to the East Gate. And on the south, from Clay Road to the east, where it meets up with the other. Uh, before it gets to the east side, uh, the. Western part of, from Clay, uh, I don't know, we were looking at access for local farmers, that will be granted. But it would probably be a private drive from there across the dam, um, probably wouldn't want access. To be driven across the dam anyway, so the, the roads should be. A non-issue as far as access for, for all, that's just something we looked into if this happens. See, oh, one thing was brought up was offers, there have been no offers, we haven't put it up for sale yet. It's, we're, uh, we done our investigation with, uh, one, uh, we put it out for several. Agencies, if they were interested in selling it.
Local folks.
Locals, uh, we had one reply, we visited with him, and that's where the estimate came from, that's nothing that. We really had any influence with, that's just, he was doing, like theoretically, this is what. They thought they would be able to get, so that's, that's just an estimate, we knew how estimates go. See, uh. I, I guess I had a problem with, uh, one thing, and that was, uh, private gain. Uh, and I, I didn't know exactly how to take that, uh, this wouldn't be. I'm not, as, as a commissioner, it don't enrich me, or I don't believe it enriches any of the other com- the commissioners by. Uh, by the sale, this is something we're contemplating, a different structure for the county for all, so. It's. There isn't anything private, and I, maybe I'm taking it, uh, took that comment, it's a little. Different than what you intended, so.
Exactly.
Okay. One of the things about this, uh, that's unfortunate is the silting in issue was. The, the lake was really doomed to be silted in from the day it was conceived. Should have had, uh, watershed dams put ahead of it. Ten year, it would have been a ten to twenty year project to get all of those put in, as we've seen in the areas. Uh, the same thing has happened in, at Perry, uh, you've seen how the Uzaki that used to be full of water, now is dirt, you know? So, uh, that's unfortunate, they, if, if this was a, if this lake was still three quarters of the original. It would probably be a di- totally just different discussion as far as the usefulness of the lake. It's, it's so shallow now, we get it, uh, have to really watch for the, uh, algae blooms. I know the people that walk their dogs, uh, one lady that's no longer here, uh, complained. Because she's afraid to take her dog for a walk, because he would jump in the water, and it had the blue algae, so scared of, of that. So there's a, a lot of different things at play that. I know, I haven't made up my mind whether this is a good thing or not, I'm in investigation mode. I, and I did, I believe you were referring to me also, when I said, I haven't seen, uh, the use. I, I have driven through there a lot, the last major use that I personally have seen. Was when, the COVID years, when we had the campers out there, and they were there for a long time, it was getting. Like November before they left, I was going, how cold is it gonna get before they have to leave? So, um, I know my observations are not scientific. Uh, that's just what I've witnessed, or I, I don't see, um, people utilizing it. Uh, again, it's not scientific, that's just something I'm, I've observed. Uh, and maybe I'm just there all at the wrong times, and I'll admit that, if, if that's. What it is, um, I don't have. Any other topics to you guys?
I, I just wanna reiterate that we're doing exactly what we need to do at this point. This was wonderful, and the, the evening that we're planning, uh, in May. Well, we hope we'll bring more folks in, uh, because this is exactly what, uh, your government entity, local government should do. They should bring folks in, with a lot of different opinions and a lot of different ideas, uh, history, and, and so. But there's, it's all about what's best for the entire. Okay, so there's three districts, yeah, I'm sure you all are aware of that, and so that's the entirety of Atchison County. And so that's what we're looking at, now I've, this, the history is wonderful, um, I've lived in Atchison for. Close to sixty years, and I've been to the lake once, so I, I appreciate the history, I really do. But, um, this, this is for the entire, this is for the, what's best for the entire county. And, uh, I'm a new guy here, I'm the new county attorney, or else the county commissioner. Uh, so I, I, uh, you know, I need to take all this in, and the process though, but I, I fully believe that the process. Uh, will work, and we'll make a decision what's best for, you know, the entire county. I was a Boy Scout, Cub Scout, so I appreciate going out and, and, uh, seeing these. Little lakes all over Kansas and all over the country, so I understand what you, what you guys are talking about. Preserving something that we can preserve, but we certainly have not made a decision yet, we are in the early stages. And, uh, so, we will, if there's questions left, when they're answered, we'll try to answer those questions and. Put it out to the public, uh, but I will say, uh, you guys covered quite a bit here. And I really appreciate you all being here and waiting, you had to wait so long, so I appreciate that.
So I would just like to say, um, kind of echo, uh, what they said, but I just wanna give like a brief snapshot of where I sit. Because, um, I just finished my first term, so four years, um, and when I first came on. Um, I went into our H R director's office, and there was this photo on the wall, and it was sunset, and it was a gorgeous lake. And I was like, oh my goodness, what is that? And we're like, that's the Atchison County Lake, and I was like, that's incredible, like I've grown up here, born and raised. I always went to the state lake growing up, didn't even know about this gem, right? So I'm like, alright, let's go kids, like loaded him up, went out there, it's gorgeous. Uh, so much that I was involved, um, many years ago, when Jackson Park had been let go. And we got this grassroots effort to come in and like revitalize the park, and it was incredible, like watching. People roll up their sleeves and give a Saturday to go make the betterment of our community, it was, it was awesome. So after going out there, I contacted Project Atchison, and I'm like, come out to this lake, like, come out here and look at this. And we walked around the lake, and we looked at the structures, and unfortunately, it was. A bit too far gone to just slap a coat of paint on and feel like you did something, right? So, so they declined, um, that they didn't feel like this was probably a good fit. Um, so, fast forward, uh, where we're at today is, we have taken kind of that. Balcony view of Atchison County, um, when we go through our budget seasons, um, we hear from taxpayers. That taxes are too high, and you know, why, why is that? I've lived in this county, and it's not this high, in this county, and it's not this high, and when, when you really look at Atchison County. We have so many wonderful, unique amenities that other counties don't have, right? We have a critical access hospital right here, we have Mount St. Scholastica, we have the Abbey, we have Benedictine College, we have Highland Community College. We have wonderful churches, um, we have so many nonprofits, like we really have things that other counties can't say they have, right? That's all wonderful, but when you look at it, all of those folks are tax exempt, right? So they don't pay taxes, so all of us, we make up that, that difference, which is fine, because we have these things. But it was one of those things, it's like, okay, now let's look in the mirror, what is the county own, right? Like, what is the county own that we could look at? So the county lake of two hundred acres, like, let's look at it, well, it's silted in, what we were told, right? Which we've confirmed three foot to seven foot amongst the whole lake.
I thought it was about even out and measured that lake.
Yes, so, yeah, and that's why I can speak to that, I would never speak if I don't know, but we got that from, yes, we have that in writing.
One time, my sis brought her, uh, boat up, sailboat, and I went out, and we put a rock, and we dropped it to sea. And at that time, down by the, uh, dam, it was about seven feet deep.
Okay, so that could be the seven foot, because it, it rained anywhere from three to seven around the whole lake, so, um, the spillway is, is broken. Um, and. Dish repair shouldn't say broken, um, but anyways, what I'm trying to say is like, we're only as good as information that we're given. And that we, so we're looking at this as an opportunity of like, what should we do, right? Like priorities in our county, unfortunately, everything has went to pot over the years and not been taken care of. From our roads, for our bridges, our culverts, everything, I mean, we're digging road pipes out that are two foot under the dirt, like, it's. The list goes on and on and on, okay? Unfortunately, this is one of the things, like, we just wanna explore it, and what we tried to do, and I, I need to clear up this misconception. Because. We asked one of our staff members to put this together, to get out to the public, to draw your attention, to do exactly what we did today. And we had no intention of like utilizing small print or not. Not making you guys feel like your voice is heard, because in our mind, we're sitting back here like, get this out to the public, so they can come and tell us what they think, right? So we put it out on social media, I go through all the social media comments and, and take them all in. Like, I am commissioner, like, I truly value the input from the citizens, I'm in District Three, the lake's not there, but I still care about our county, right? As a whole, um, I've contacted M W I and Hiwatha, and they have absolutely no interest in owning a lake. Like, because some of the feedback was things like that, I contacted Dredge America, they're working up a quote based on the depths that we know of the lake. Versus what it should be, to tell us what those numbers look like, right? Um, Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks, the state lake, they have a caretaker, they rent out cabins, they generate like. So I was like, well, maybe they could help us, they could assist in this, I talked to the gentleman there, and he was like, they are having a hard time maintaining currently. What they already have, right? So they're not interested in acquiring anymore, but they definitely sent me some links to some grant opportunities. Um, but here's the thing, we have to have a plan prior to applying for a grant, because we've seen, right? One of the things I've most recently seen is our finance director is incredible, he applies for grants and we're successful, but we're applying for Memorial Hall. And then find a resolution, we're not even in compliance, right? So we have to have a plan, we have to know what path we're going forward, um. As far as the maintenance, yes, we have those costs, um, over the past five years, we have a resolution from two thousand eighteen. With rules and regulations of County Lake, I don't know who's enforcing those things right now, like, so there's a lot of unanswered questions, um. Mister Saxton, I appreciate this, like, there's so many more things I need to learn about, and I think that. Um, Mrs. Saxton, I, nice to meet you, we did know about your driveway, and we did have a plan to. You know, have that, um, fixed for you prior to anything, but I just, this is really good. And it's so funny, because social media can go down a rabbit hole, and people can message me like, I can't believe what's going on, and I'm like, as a commissioner? This is a good thing, like, people should feel like they can speak up, and we value what you say, like, I think that's. This is how it should feel, this is how it should be, where you show up, you're heard, and you feel like your voices matters. And to Mister Campbell's point, there are sixteen plus thousand people in this county, and it's interesting how many come up to me and say, I think you're on the right track. You need to sell that county lake, and I'm like, well, you need to show up at the meeting, because we need to hear your perspective too, right? Like, it's, there's two sides to everything, we just need to make sure we do our due diligence, and then whatever decision is made. We can all sit back and say, there's the pros, there's the cons. They outweigh one another, so I just, um, I. They outweigh one another. So I just, um, I appreciate conversations like this. I think hard, like, I think they're great. I think we all learned from them and we can all have a greater faith in what's happening in our county by knowing it's not being taken lightly and it's not just, oh, we have something we wanna accomplish, so we're gonna sell it like, like, no. It's not like that at all. It was just, let's take a look in the mirror and let's see, you know, what does this look like? And that's all we're doing is exploring the option, gathering the information, and I think we're all gonna walk away from this. Um, knowing a heck of a lot more about our county as a whole, so. And knowing our neighbors and knowing when I drive by and wave at you, I know who you are, and it's just, it's good. I think this is really good. So I appreciate you all for taking time out of your day. Um, again, we just chose this time based on our meeting with no ill intent that we thought about people working. Like, we just wanted a platform. So we will definitely have an evening meeting um and allow everyone to feel like they're valued because they truly are, like you're all truly valued to, to hear. And I talked to a gentleman on the phone last night for over an hour. Um, and actually, it's funny because at the end I said, would you be willing to serve on a committee if we put a committee together to brainstorm and bring a solution to the commission of what this looks like? And he's like, well, if that happens, like I wouldn't say no, but then he started speaking longer about his family and the children, his children and what his son majors in and where he goes to college and all the things. And I'm like, wait a minute, I know I asked you, but I feel like your son might be a better fit, like a really good fit to, to be on this committee, so.
It's my kiddo.
Yeah, I think.
He actually works part-time in the summer at the state lake.
So, so it would, yeah. So I just, I don't know. I think this is really good to have these conversations and to understand all the professionals we have in the county that can add value to this discussion. So, thank you all for coming. Thank you all for tuning in on Zoom. I just, looking forward to the next one.
We will be looking into some of the things that Ian has got, what she's been.
You betcha. We have a few weeks to, to be prepared and, and to do our due diligence a little bit deeper, so.
And that means we all here or?
Yeah. Thank you guys so much.
I wasn't born in Saxton, but I'm still seventy-two years with the Saxton name.
Oh, that's awesome. Well, it's very nice to meet you. Okay, nice.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys so much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, you know, I looked and looked and I thought, I know you, but I couldn't. It's been four years, yeah. You're what, two years ahead of me or three, I think?
I would agree to. Julian was.
Yes, that'd be right. I ran into, I think it was from mother-in-law who was had, was with the KOC. Yep, and already K and T conference.
Mr. Campbell?
Okay, well, thank you.
We need to uh. Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Sorry, Blair, we're just a couple minutes behind. Yeah, I can make it.
Yeah. I'm coming to the last one. Too, because now we can answer some of those things that are actual question.
It's so nice to meet you guys.
Thank you.
And thanks for coming up to Bourbon County. That's awesome. Nice to meet you. That's great.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good meeting you.
Yeah, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
So we have, oh.
You said the, the Memorial Hall be the May thirteen?
Okay, yeah, let me just double check the, throwing out names, and I just wanted to be sure. Um, so we invited, um, yeah, I tweeted off Memorial Hall will be active on May thirteen.
Yeah, I did know that.
The County Lake, number two, you got the action picture. Okay, good, working at seven PM.
Okay.
Thank you so much for covering it too.
Yeah, no, that's, thank you.
Oh my gosh, yeah, you always do a good job.
Thank you.
I emailed Joe about the hydrant. They shut it off because people believe it's running. So they use it when they spray, they, they access it so that the hydrant is viable. Cuz if a, if a hydrant ain't viable, why are we paying, you know, paying for it? And I wondered, I thought there was something about that.
Okay, so we are all the way through our agenda today, and I would look for a motion to adjourn into budget workshop. We have register of deeds at twelve thirty and EMS at one PM. Moved in section it, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes.